Hopefully that's a Sunday, I believe it is.
And where is this, what time?
It's the old Trinity Baptist, which is now Trinity Community Church. They're across from Horn Funeral Services.
Oh, okay.
The one that's got the front yard dug out of it, pending improvements.
They're the ones that will have access to the stoplight.
Yes.
They will.
Yes, that's a good thing for them.
What was the time on that?
It's church service during the day. I will copy that letter and just shoot it out to any of you. Reminder that they would like for us to RSVP by the 10th. I think they're gonna feed us. Heathwood Market's gonna pay the meal after the service. I'm sorry, Randy, got in the middle of everything you had there. Is that it? Town attorney? Just long? Any other staff member?
We have an update on homestays. Really quickly, and we will have some additional information the next, probably the second meeting in September, as we get into further research. But we've, Randy said on the earlier today, I just wanted to add on to that. We do have 26 homestay applications. Twenty-three of them have been approved and three are pending. So we do believe that that's a fairly good start, but we will need to go back and do town research on our end to look for additional homestays and put it out there and encourage anybody who may not be aware that they need a homestay permit, that they do need to come in. So we'll have a better assessment of what the full picture of what we do need, how many homestays there are out there. And we'll be presenting some information at the second meeting in September.
Very good. Is that any type, I mean, I know you said town staff is researching it. I mean, is that something that we could use, some interns or some part-time students, like about any fourth grade that knows how to use the Internet type thing for a short period of time, rather than our staff time? We might save some money on?
Absolutely, and we have them in the past to get an initial view of them when we were looking at the ordinance. And so I do think that that would be a good resource to use potentially. And we will need to get letters out to people that, you know, once we do potentially identify them and say, are you conducting an Airbnb or VRBO? If you are, then please be aware of these rules and contact staff.
Once we identify these people, would we be able to verify with the county?
We'll continue to work with them.
Yeah. Really disappointing, but yeah, okay. All right, thanks. Wayne?
We've been down a key position in engineering. The Assistant Director in charge of land development and operations. I'm pleased to announce that I made an offer to a gentleman from Santa Fe, Mexico. He'll be here on the 23rd, will be his first day of work. And I'll be able to introduce him to you on the evening of the 24th of next month.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Council reports. Mr. Collins?
I imagine all finished together.
Mr. Bishop?
Go ahead, Mr. Bishop.
Mr. Showalter?
None.
Stumps?
Didn't plan, I'm gonna make a brief comment about the homestay again. I'm glad we're looking into that. And again, for council and also the folks that are watching. Typically Christiansburg is not aggressive in some aspects of zoning and so forth. But one thing that we need to be, continue to be aggressive on, is creating a level playing field for our businesses. We've already voted, I wasn't, you know, my personal views on the homestay ordinance were different, but now that we have it, I want to make it very clear that I think this council is committed to creating a level playing field. And I think we need to continue to do that. It's no different than people that are running lawn mowing services out of their home and competing with businesses. So as we do that, I'm glad we're pursuing that and I'm looking forward to seeing that. But that's one area that we do need to be aggressive, is creating a level playing field for our businesses.
Mr. Hubbard?
Well, I just want to make the announcement there that the Aquatic Center will be celebrating the 10th anniversary next year. And they're gonna try to do something the first week in August. And they have it nailed all down there for us. But they are definitely gonna do something nice to celebrate the 10th anniversary.
Very good. Ms. Sax?
I do have a few. I just wanted to thank the museum for putting on a wonderful heritage day and public works for all their hard work helping with that. Also, this last Saturday, there was a dialogue on race that I attended and I saw a few other people there. And it was a great time. If you've never been, please plan to join their winter meeting. It was really informative, the work that they do. And also, there's a muddy ace race coming up roughly around the third week of September in Giles. And that's the program that helps all of our students attend community colleges. So if you are energetic or not, please feel free to check it out. You can participate, you can just go to volunteer, or just watch, because it's quite entertaining what all of these people are gonna have to do when they go through this race. Thanks.
I have been researching as diligently as I can municipal flag policies. The only three that I've found are out of Canada at this point. But there was information to glean, and I've checked with a couple of cities that have flags, and so they don't really have a policy. And so I'm gleaning the information on that to hopefully have something to present to you by the end of September, as far as policy goes. And is there any other business to come full council? We're adjourned in an hour and two minutes. Third town council, August 27, 2019, to order. We have three scouts from Troop 141 that are observing us tonight for citizenship in the community, probably. Mayor Baggs, would you introduce yourselves?
I'm David Fox.
Adam Klein.
John Fox.
Thank you. I have a seat. And once we go through the moment of reflection, I'm gonna ask them to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Let's take a few moments of reflection about your week, your day, your life. Anything that you want to talk, think about to yourself. Let's take a minute or so to do that. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Gentlemen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good, thank you, gentlemen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? There are none, we'll move into public hearings. Our first one is a conditional use request by Jeff and Liz Dixon for a single-family residential dwelling at 100 South Franklin Street, tax map number 527A-250 in the B2 Central Business District. Property is designated as downtown mixed-use on the future land use map of the 2013 comprehensive plan. The public hearing was held on this two weeks ago, and the planning commission recommended this 7O. Anyone here to address this issue? Yes. Microphone, name and address, please.
I'm Jeff, and this is my wife Liz Dixon. We live in 1834 My Pike in Christiansburg. We previously looked at the residence at Franklin Street, fell in love with it. We were going to turn it into a couple apartments and some businesses downstairs. Were not able to get the funding for that. And so we got out of that contract probably six months ago or so, maybe nine months now. But the property kept coming back to our minds, and we thought about just turning it back into a residential. So that's kind of our goal. We've just recently listed our house, so hopefully we'll place it.
Any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else to address this public hearing? There are none, I'll close that section. Autumn B is a boundary line adjustment agreement moving approximately 68.866 acres from the unincorporated area of the County of Montgomery into the incorporated town of Christiansburg. The proposed boundary adjustment area is commonly known as Falling Branch Corporate Park, Phase Two, parcel two, tax map number 40, I'm sorry, 94-8-8, formerly the Cox property, and is located on the southern boundary of the town of Christiansburg, west of the intersection of Technology Drive Southeast and Parkway Drive Southeast. Is there anyone here to address this issue? I think this is all part of the original tracts of land we were looking for. Did we not vote this one?
They didn't have the survey complete at the time. Basically, this is, would be expansion of the Falling Branch.
Everything's in and done now?
Looked exception in this profit.
Well, I meant the survey and all, that's all completed, everything's in. All right. Here's another one. We'll move to the consent agenda, which is the council minutes of August 13, 2019, the monthly bill list, the approval of professional services engineering contract with McDonough Bowl Yard PAC Incorporated MBP in the amount of $94,240 for PPEA consulting slash design phase services associated with the Christiansburg-Hart interim agreement. Approval of professional services engineering contract for Rinker Design Associates, PC, RDA, in the amount of $59,140 for initial design and funding application assistance for the Cambria Trail Phase One. We have five public hearings to set for October the 22nd. Without reading every sentence of every paragraph, basically Magnolia Point Community LLC requesting rezoning of 9.14 acres of property from A Agriculture to R3 multifamily residential. Property is designated as residential on the future land map of Christiansburg. The next is scheduled public hearing for October 22nd for a conditional use request contingent on the preceding request by Magnolia Point Community LLC. Their intent is multifamily dwellings and town homes on properly located Pepper's Ferry Road Northwest and New Village Drive. Scheduled public hearing October 22nd, 2019. Res zoning request for states and homes, advocate for property owned by the Halberstadt Family Limited Partnership, B1 limited business to B3 general business. And it is designated as mixed-use residential in the future land map. Public hearing for conditional use request contingent on the preceding request, states and homes, property owners. Property is designated mixed-use residential business on the future land use map of Christiansburg. And scheduled public hearing on September 24th for the town of Christiansburg, Community Development Block, Grand Consolidation Plan, and Annual Action Plan.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
I have a revision to the minutes, it's a minor one.
Okay.
Provided that to the town clerk. It was in the street committee report about a 40-foot right-of-way versus a 45-foot right-of-way on one of the parcels, but I'm...
And that's been corrected?
And it's in process of being corrected, yeah.
Okay.
Just to make that note, if the motion in second would support that, just a clarification from our street committee.
I revise my motion to include the revision in minutes. Second.
Got a revision for a second?
And then I have another question, Mr. Nelson is here. The contract with the consultant for the Cambria Trail.
Yes, sir.
And looking at that, I thought we were, it looked like us, well, just looking at the fee, I looked at it and then looked at the contract, and is that only taking us to 10% to 15% complete?
At this time, we, the application to do begins in October. And we want to nail down a good alignment of the trail.
Right.
Focus on this application, and then you'll have the ability to amend this contract.
Okay.
For survey and preliminary.
And, okay.
Yes.
So we're not stopping?
We're just taking it, taking it one step at a time.
Okay, very good. Then I'm fine with that.
Any other questions or comments?
I do, Mayor, I would like to take B as a separate vote, please.
Okay. So...
I'll revise my motion to include the revisions to the minutes and my motion to approve the consent agenda AC, BE, F, D, HIJ.
Sam, you got that?
I'll second again.
All right, very good. Okay, no further questions, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6O, monthly bill list. Do we have a motion? Do you want to vote on it? Red vote, comments, questions? Madam Clark?
Do we have a motion in a second? Make a motion to vote on B.
B section. All right, we got it.
Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Nay.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 5O, thank you. Introductions and presentations, we have new employee introductions. Assistant Engineering Director for Capital Projects Utilities, Justin St. Clair, to introduce our new civil engineer, one. Justin? Is the microphone on?
Bryce Young. This is Bryce Young. He started with our engineering department back on August 19th. He will serve as civil engineer one for the town. Been working on the town's water and wastewater projects and program, as well as acting as project manager on some of those. Bryce was born and raised in Franklin County and moved to Nure Valley in 2014 to attend Virginia Tech. After graduating with an engineering degree in 2017, he gained experience with working in the water and wastewater field as an engineering technician for the Montgomery County Public Service Authority. He has his EIT designation engineering training and is currently building his experience for his PE license in the next three years. Outside of work, Bryce enjoys a range of outdoor activities, including hunting, fishing, snowboarding, and motocross. His girlfriend Lexi is currently pursuing her doctorate of veterinary medicine at the Virginia Maryland College of Veterinary Medicine in Blacksburg. And they are both excited to live in and have the opportunity to serve those in the NRA.
Yeah, I'd have you, buddy.
Welcome. Next on the presentations, Assistant Engineering Director, Capital Projects and Utilities, Justin St. Clair, to present on North Franklin Street construction projects.
So this is just a brief presentation to kind of go over the current status and some kind of future options for planning to move forward with other projects kind of downtown or that are affect traffic kind of way these have. The three projects I want to discuss today are the College Street Sewer Rehabilitation Replacement Project, the North Franklin Storm Drain Improvement Project, and the North Franklin Corridor Improvements. Just a quick overview of the three, including the background, the different budgets. We have those in change orders and challenges we encounter. Give an update on current status and the proposed schedule moving forward. And then just kind of have just a brief overview of some timely performance options and methods for time controls that we have for the contracts and things going forward, including liquidated damages, time limits, different completion requirements, restrictions, and also incentives and disincentives that we can put on the contract. First project is the College Street Sewer Rehab Replacement Contract, or Project, excuse me. This aims to reduce sanitary sewer overflows in the downtown area, primarily what's considered the College Street Sewer Shed. This consists of two different work areas, the first being from North Franklin Hickok Street, and the second down along Town Branch from the Aquatic Center down to Crab Creek. This increases the capacity by enlarging diameter of the conveyance pipe. The contractor used different methods such as pipe bursting and open cut. And the work down along Town Branch and near Crab Creek involves two rock bores under Mill Lane and the railroad, and includes two creek crossings. For the project budget, we received only two bids when we bid this out. And the town ended negotiating with the lower bidder to remove work from the scope of the contract to lower the cost to a better allow budget at the time. The ending contract value that we were able to negotiate down to was just over $1.6 million. And as you can see in the bid tab, our next lowest bidder, our only other bidder, was $675,000 more expensive than our low bidder. And this was bid back in summer of last year. The bidding climate was exceptionally aggressive just due to a lot of other projects in the area, and that was also when the mountain bike pipeline was in kind of full swing.
Could you go back to that slide, please?
Yes, sir.
How come the pricing down below is not the same as it is above? What's the difference between the 1.6 and the 1.9?
So this was the bids as read, so that was what was bid initially. And then we negotiated with them to remove some work out of the scope to get it...
Okay, so it took some stuff out.
Correct.
Thanks.
There have been a handful of change orders on this project. The first one was executed with the contract to remove that work out of the scope of the contract. That decreased its value by $261,000, and there was no change in the contract time. The second change order involved a portion of work that was initially designed to be pipe burst, but established to be not feasible once we were in the field and going. This added a unit price for 15-inch PVC sewer to be constructed outside of a roadway but within pavement for replacement repair. And notably, this was at the professional park, Dr. Jones's parking lot back between Commerce and College. That was a net increase of about $23,000, and 14 days of that to the contract.
Can we stop there? Can I ask, can I ask a question so I can understand? Actually, you know, this isn't my area of practice. With pipe bursting, the benefit of that is you don't have to dig a trench, you can burst it in the ground. What are you, you're putting a new pipe in where the existing one is, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, so when this happened, when the pipe bursting was deemed to be not unfeasible, then it went to trenching?
To traditional open cut.
Open cut, okay.
And so, not to go too far, but the contract was bid to have that as an either-or, assuming that the contractor could do open cut. But it also assumed that pipe bursting was feasible. And once we got in there, it was not an actual solution they could use. So there were no other contract line items that allowed them to get pavement repair, basically as they did the open cut.
Okay, and then you added two weeks to the calendar, or 14? Are those workdays or calendar days?
Calendar days.
Two weeks, okay.
And there's a pending change order three, which removes some of the work that ended up being pushed to different projects, the North Franklin Storm Drain Project, and then the future Hickok Street Improvement Project. And there was an addition of storm drain covert on Hickok Street to replace an existing portion of three-sided box covert that was discovered during the actual construction process. We expected to have it bottom, but it was actually just built on that rock. So that ended up a net increase of about $10,000 as expected, and they requested 12 days to add to the contract, and we thought that was a reasonable request.
I can ask you one other thing on this, please?
Yes, sir.
This one here, plus all the others too, do we have a timeframe? If they're not done by this time, they pay us? Or they get less money, or?
Yes, there are liquidated damages on these contracts.
Okay, for each project?
Yes, sir, independently, yes.
And so right now, they're on schedule?
No. The sewer job is not, so... This kind of goes over that a little bit, too. They mobilized back on March 11th, and they began the night work in the intersection of North Franklin Depot on March 18th. The closure of southbound traffic occurred simultaneously with the requirement that work had to occur in North Franklin Street during the day. We didn't want to close the street just when they were doing night work and nothing was happening during the day. After intersection work was completed, they performed work only during the day, and the project shifted from the North Franklin Street area to the section from Grand Street to Hickok Street on May 28th. The final sewer tie-in has been completed on Hickok Street, but the remaining tasks include the installation of storm drain and the work at Mill Lane at the railroad. The boring operations have been so challenging due to various circumstances. For this job, the contractor did not request any type of blasting for trench rock removal. And the contractor recently replaced the project manager on the job, and things seem to be progressing at a faster pace. Actually put Jeff Stanley, I think's his name, who is a local previous BDOT guy. He's over the project now. The proposed schedule, completion of the work at Hickok Street is expected to occur in the next 10, 15 days. The paving activities, the patching, may remain depending on the weather. Working on Mill Lane and at the railroad will take longer due to rock encounter during the bore operations. However, no road closures are expected for this work to occur. The town did send a notice to the contractor on July 18th that we are reserving the white right to demand liquidated damages in the amount of $750 per day beginning July 18th. That was prior to the additional time we gave them on change order three. Liquidated damages, lower state of liquidated damages will start August 1st. Immediate measurable efforts on behalf of the contractor to expedite the work, and the town is currently evaluating their efforts after this notice.
What was the original completion date, then?
The contract completion date would have been July 17th after the second change order for substantial completion, and then August 17th for the final completion.
Okay, I was thinking it was back in April.
Yeah, generally, I mean, the contract extends beyond what we expect the contractor to take. We give them some extra time for weather and things like that. This has extended far beyond the expectation we had when we started this.
Well, then, I'm, yeah, I'm taking responsibility. I thought that it was supposed to, the first project was supposed to be wrapped up in April. But if that's not the case, then we're not as behind as we thought we were. But thank you.
Okay. North Franklin Storm Drain Project is the second one. This relines current storm drain under the existing buildings, primarily ideal cabinets, C-Tech, in that area along North Franklin. This includes two 42-inch diameter storm drain coverts that are laid in parallel. This extends from the opening back here behind the police department of the stream and extends all the way down to an existing box covert that runs kind of this general production along North Franklin. The goal here is to reduce the risk of flooding to the existing structures, primarily those buildings that the stream currently flows under. And they can actually hear, when they're sitting there in their office, they can hear the stream drip down through there. And provide adequate conveyance for the section of the relocated drainage system. For this job, contractors were a little more excited to put in bids. We actually received seven different bids with a wide range of contract values. Our engineers' cost estimate initially was about $1.2 million. Our bids received ranged from $600,000 to over $1.3 million in some instances. This is a revenue sharing project with BDOT, so it's generally a 50/50 match. We're just slightly over what BDOT's allocated, so the town's match is a little more than 50% at this point.
What criteria did you use to pick this particular company?
Invitation for bid is low bidder only per Virginia procurement. We can deem bidders non-responsible or non-responsive if they have, if their bid is unbalanced, or they have, you know, just something exceptionally wrong with their bid, is non-responsive, or they don't provide all the documentation we require. Non-responsible... Non-responsible is a little bit more challenging, because you basically have to prove that they are not responsible to complete the work. So obviously, someone can get really upset with that if we just nilly-cut people.
Thank you.
With this project, there's two pending change orders. The first one has been already completed by Phil Directive. It's to realign that portion of sewer that we removed from College Street job, and also realigned a few waterline conflicts that were discovered as we moved through construction. That was an increase of about $33,000, and the contractor did not request any additional time. The second change order is also pending. It's an addition of a manhole and a mainline connection to include the drain pipe. That was not found during survey, but drains the old dry cleaner building there, 11 North Franklin Street. And ballpark for that is maybe about $7,500. We don't have that in yet, so it's not that much of a big deal to tie in. The contractor mobilized back on April 1st to remove the trees that were in the way due to the April 15 restrictions of the Endangered Threat Species Act. They can't remove trees between April 15th and September 15th otherwise. Remobilization occurred around July 1st, where after the sewer contractor demobilized from North Franklin Street, active trench work began, and the traffic pattern shift to the other side of the street occurred on 15th. The contractor in this instance did apply for blasting permit to remove the trench rock. That process includes a review and approval from the fire department, as well as nearby utilities, which in this case was Atmos Gas. The fire department was also on-site every time they set off a charge. And at this point, they've completed all their blasting that they have to do, can do. The proposed schedule was estimated to be off 12 weeks from the July 1st mobilization. The work is progressing very well, and the contractor expects to be off the street with patching by the end of next week on the 6th. They'll probably have to end up coming back to do surface mix pavement, but they'll have the road back running at that point. They will have to continue work up between ideal cabinets and marine burr removal, however, North Franklin will be back close to where it was before it all just started.
And you're saying, when would that be?
September 6th.
You're saying September 6th, the road will be two-way?
They should have it back open by that unless they happen to hit rock that slows them down. They blasted everything they could up toward the turn there. There were a lot more utilities, so they restricted as how much they could basically blow up the rock. So they are in front of the ABC store currently, and so it's just, you know, not much further to make that turn. So I talked to him today, he felt like September 6th was a reasonable expectation for them.
In my opinion, that's wonderful. I'd heard it was going to be probably until October, you know?
The whole project will probably extend through that, but North Franklin should be back open. That's the goal.
Should be passable, maybe not as smooth as it was?
Correct. They'll have a few bumps in it until they get the surface mix on.
I've told a lot of people, we have two seasons in Christiansburg. That's winter and road construction, and you're proving me wrong, sir.
I'm doing my best. The last project I'm going to go through is the North Franklin Corridor Improvement Project, which most people are very familiar with this one. This configures a five-legged intersection at Cambria and North Franklin to install a new signalized intersection at the convergence of 460 Business and 460 Bypass prior to Cambria Street. It includes a new signalized intersection at Patrick's Way that includes pedestrian accommodations, and there's also sidewalks of both sides of the street with improved access management along the corridor. For this project, we received four bids. The engineer's cost estimate was around $4.5 million without a contingency plot to it. Our total budget for the smart scale project was $8.5 million, and the smart scale is just a different type of funding that VDOT has, which covers nearly the entire cost of the project. The town's involvement was about $12,000 or so, so it was definitely a good deal for the town. We did receive the four bids below, and they were all relatively close together, ranging between $5 million and $6 million. Currently, there's only one pending change order on this, some utility conflicts which were discovered during construction. And we also came across some undesirable aging infrastructure, which we intended to leave in place, but now's the time, since we have the road open and things like that, to address that. Working through a few plan issues, just some probably survey and things like that, and some design issues. And right now, we don't have a number on what that's going to be until we kind of work through those things, and the contractor has asked for time, but we don't know kind of what that impact will be yet either. This all just started more recently. We issued a notice of receipt on May 20th, and they began roadwork around the 5th of June. They've completed the majority of storm drain work on both the east and the west sides of the roadway from Patrick's Way south toward Independence. This job does have lane closure restrictions on it, so they're only allowed to close lanes outside of morning, evening rush hour traffic, which has, I think, worked really well, and people have been very appreciative of that. The contractor has mobilized their crew to the ramp area north of Cambria Street to tie in the convergence point from, I guess it's a business route, to the 460 bypass exits. For this job, they did not request any type of blasting. Currently, our schedule is substantial completion to be completed by or on May 1st, 2020, with final on June 1st, 2020. And this is, just kind of go through a few different things for timely performance options and methods. The top four the town currently uses in various capacities own contracts, the bottom two we have not used in the past, but certainly will be an option. The first one that we always include in all of our contracts are liquidated damages, which basically means the contractor is responsible for any damages, which would be costs incurred by the town after substantial final completion deadlines, which could include administrative costs, inspection costs, things like that. The only issue with that is sometimes it's difficult to prove those damages and recover those costs. It does take a little bit of effort to get those. It's not just a clear, here's your invoice, and this is what we're taking off your check. We do tend to limit contract times to narrow that band of how long we want something to take. That gives better control of when work will occur and an expectation of when it will complete. The challenge with that, and the challenge we had last year, was that some contractors were so busy when we limited them or said, this is the band you have, they just weren't able to bid, because they didn't have the crews to do it. There do tend to be costs for additional restrictions and risks, especially if the contractor doesn't have the crews to do it, then they have to go out and hire people, and that takes money. Milestone completion requirements, we of course always have a substantial final completion for the entire project, but this actually allows us to stage specific milestones so to meet various completions of maybe like getting through the first half of this road by a certain date, and the next half by that certain date. So these different stages can complete in predefined intervals. This does tend to give the contractor less flexibility to stage and progress their work as they desire. For instance, if they have a storm drain crew finishing up another job, but the contract dictates they have to have a storm drain done by next month, well, that really puts them in the bind. So that can result in additional costs to the owner if we restrict how they do their work. Fourth one specifically is what we have on the corridor project, for time of day restrictions and lane closure restrictions. The work is more predictable and controlled. There is a potential for less impacted traffic and business disruptions. The town generally restricts night work except by request, and we generally don't allow work on Sundays or outside of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., more or less. This, of course, can link in the overall project due to the limited time the contractor can be completing the work, which can potentially counteract the benefits. And also, it does tend to add cost. If they're only able to work six hours during the day, their employees generally still expect to get paid for eight hours. So they're going to increase the cost when they're not able to work. The last two are not two that we've used in the past, but VDOT has become more excited to use, and it's actually an incentive for disincentive for monetary gain. So contractor actually has the ability to basically earn more money on the job. So just a quick example of, we would set a date and say, this is your incentive date, and for every day you finish early, you might get paid $1,000 or, however, that's determined based on the cost of the road use, which would generally depend on the number of users and business impacts and things like that. It is generally capped at 5% of the contract value, so it's not like they can just bang up the contract in one quick month and walk away with tens of thousands of dollars of cash in their pocket. The only, the cons to this, of course, is it does cost more, and it's, you know, basically just cash for the improved benefit of production. The town would have to fully appropriate those funds for the job and assume they were going to be spent before we entered into contract, because there would be full expectation the contractor would attempt to earn those funds. For disincentives, it's basically the exact opposite of incentives, but it's not liquidated damages. Contractor has the monetary detriment of completing milestone late, so basically once they miss that early completion incentive, we could basically start pulling money off the job. But there is a, it is known that is not a penalty, that's just non-payment basically for those days. So disincentive and liquidated damages can't go concurrently. They're two different things. The liquidated damages would only start after the actual contract has expired, so.
Can you say, we do not use that right now?
We currently do not use incentives or disincentives, correct.
Okay. About the project we're doing right now on the street, I thought you said that we do use that right now. There's a time limit, and after that, they get...
For the corridor project, we have the time of day and the lane closure restrictions in place.
Yep, that doesn't affect the time of the project. I mean, if we want the project to be completed here, and they do it, and they don't get it done here, we're not hitting them with any kind of, you know, slow work clause.
The liquidated damages...
Still don't do anything at all.
The liquidated damages would kick in if they are able to complete the contract on time. The liquidated damages, we have that in all of our construction contracts currently.
So they bid the project for X dollars, understanding there's a completion date and the lane closure restrictions, etc.
Correct. All that stuff is clearly laid out in the contract.
I'm surprised. It's not like the circumstances change after the bid.
Correct. And if we do ask them to change the circumstances, then they obviously expect some sort of consideration for that.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Counselor, does it, have we been or anybody we know, any municipality, with collecting on liquidated damages? Does the staff work, are there attorney fees, or is it just a waste, basically a waste of time? Because we assume that the contractor wants to get the job done so he can make the money and move on.
We can collect, and we have collected on liquidated damages in the past, although like Alan is doing too. Although, like Justin said, it basically has to tie back to our damages from the project. So things like additional inspections from the town, basically in excess of length of the term of the contract, we can charge.
Or if you're paying a consultant for CEI services or something like that?
Correct.
And I've run, yeah. But you have to show, from what I understand, attorney, yeah, you can put whatever number you want, but when it comes time to claim it, you have to show that you have been damaged, rather than just this arbitrary number out there, $1,000 a day or whatever, right?
Right. The law is that they make liquidated damages, and you're allowed to put them in because it's hard to estimate them, and then they expect you when you come in to estimate them. It's a very odd area of the law.
Prove it, prove it.
Yeah.
Is it an arbitrator, or?
It depends upon the, you can put an arbitration clause in your contract, but most of the time, we advise against it. You're much better off if you go to court.
Going to court?
Yeah.
You get an arbitration, you're guaranteed to be giving up something, usually.
Right. And at least if you have a legal argument, you've got, you know you're going to have a judge, as opposed to whoever, as an arbitrator.
Right.
A lot of times contractors, if you threaten liquidated damages, they'll straighten up pretty quick. Also, they'll tend to negotiate that back out, so they may not, they don't want their bonding company to know that they've been charged liquidated damages, so they may offer it as like a good faith credit, is what I've heard it called, just to help the municipality or owner recoup some of those costs. Because it's negative for them, of course, so they don't want that on there.
And have we warned the first project that has gone over about this?
Correct. They got a letter on the 18th of...
That's right, that's right.
Yes, July, yes, sir.
Is your presentation done?
Yes, sir.
I think you did an outstanding job.
You sure did.
Good job.
Yeah.
You did an outstanding job.
We get a copy of that?
Yes.
Can we get a copy?
A hard copy, yes, yes.
I'd like to put that out there on the website, because people have been blowing in my ear, and I'm sure other councils, what's going on with that.
You hear a lot of it.
Yeah, but I wouldn't, if it's possible for Melissa or someone to put that out there, that would be much appreciated, just an update. Maybe not the whole present, I don't know, about what the schedule is now. And, yeah, they don't care about all the liquidated damages and all that stuff, but I appreciate, yeah.
And I'm glad to hear the September 6th date, too. That's awesome.
I'm very impressed with this contractor's ability to move down the street.
Good job.
Was that pace?
Yes, EC pace, certainly.
EC pace is good. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Justin.
Thank you. This is Citizens' Comments Section. If you would like to address council about any items of concern or issues, please come to the podium, give your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Is anyone here to address council? Hearing none. I will close the Citizens' Comments. Go to committee reports.
Sure. Central Business is tomorrow at noon, right here in the town hall, so I welcome everybody to attend. We have it once a month, so every other council meeting, I won't have any exciting news to update to. But hopefully on the next one, we will get a lot done tomorrow, and I'll report on that. Thanks.
The Aquatic Center has been closed basically for the last two weeks for maintenance and the yearly cleaning, and it will reopen on Thursday.
I've not seen no committee reports.
Risky.
Don't have it, Ben.
Yes, sir. New River, our regional commission met this past week, and we were informed that there's a commission now studying what to, what the interstate, and they're getting ready to do something really quick. Brad probably knows about this already. And if you want to know what's happening there, you can go to the website, V881corridor.org. Let me try it again. V8, VA, Virginia, 81 corridor.org, and now tell you what the plans are for the interstate. Also, there's going to be a meeting here on October the 3rd for the railroad, road, to see what they're going to do with the...
The passenger rail?
The passenger rail, yeah, yeah.
I'll give a quick update on that, just for...
Yeah.
The update is, is that the commissioner, VDOT's commissioner, is very, very ambitious and wants to see all of these projects started within seven years, which is very ambitious for a lot of lead time for environmental, but VDOT is committed to making something big happen on that.
Yeah, quick.
And Salem District, 81 runs through three VDOT districts, Stanton, Salem, and Bristol. And Salem District has the most critical work to be done as far as volume-wise. Anyway, seven years is pretty ambitious for VDOT. Doesn't sound ambitious, but for anyone that's in the project delivery mode to deliver a couple billion dollars worth of projects and get it through environmental hurdles and so forth, but seven to 10, and then 10 years to be complete, that's very ambitious. So there's going to be a lot of, there's going to be a lot of construction zones on 81 here in a little bit, and that's starting now. I mean, they're doing some smaller work, auxiliary, you know, turn lane... I mean, they're doing some smaller work auxiliary, you know, turn lanes and auxiliary lanes, but you're gonna see a lot of construction on 81 over the next seven to 10 years.
Great incentive to take the train. Give it up and get some research for it.
You're exactly right.
All righty. Any other reports from committees? Discussion, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. I can ask about the art and stuff. One of the supervisors for the county came up to me today and said that we went to them to ask them permission to paint some signage on their property here in town, and we're gonna pay them $2,500 bucks. Is that true?
They're talking about the mural library.
Library?
Yeah.
And so that is true?
Yes, that's the...
We presented that project two weeks ago, I believe, to show what it looked like. I think, were we just, were we asking their permission to do?
It was a joint request, I believe.
Yeah.
A joint effort.
Correct, with half the funding coming from the town through recent donations that the town received for art, for art projects, as well as the Library Foundation putting up the other half.
Okay.
And it's a local artist that's done, that's done work in and around Cambria as well as downtown. So she does the base painting for us at different events and such. So she's, and I'm happy to send that back out.
Yeah, you might need to contact the county, because they're not too excited about it. Just letting you know, you know, what they said today, okay?
The supervisor's not excited about it?
Yeah, yeah.
Who you talked to?
Yeah.
All or one, or what?
Just one that I talked to today. Yep. Who started the art stuff around here? Who started the council, the art council, all that stuff? Who's got this going? Pretty good idea, though.
We did talk about it in Central Business.
Yeah, but who started the art?
We started it, what, Marty, you, several, about a couple of years ago, you kind of moderated an event, and it's, it's not progressed as we had hoped, but...
No, but it's started.
We think now we're putting some more emphasis into it.
You did good, buddy.
I think the mural at the library, and it's on the outdoor amphitheater, right, on the amphitheater, and that's gonna be nice, that was presented. I'm sorry that supervisor doesn't agree with it, but it'll do great. It'll do good for the citizens of Christiansburg out there.
The people who donated some of that money for the art, they'll be notified what we're doing with it?
They have been kept abreast of...
They have very good thinking. It's awesome.
Okay, are we through the committee reports? Discussion and action by mayor and council with the approval of the Personal Property Tax Rate Relief Act percentage for 2019. Randy? That's such an easy subject, I'm gonna let you in.
It is basically annual, basically approval that you have to do for the personal property tax. This is basically relief for elderly, totally disabled. It's based, it's not, it's based on income?
This is the...
This is the Gilmore.
Ten-some years ago, when...
The car, the car tax. This is the car tax.
They wanted to get rid of the car tax, and they started with, given the jurisdiction, a certain sum of money, but then that sort of skidded into it all. So now we get the same amount of money every year, and that goes to discount all of the personal property taxes on cars that are under $20,000. Anything over $20,000 doesn't give a discount. So you have to calculate what that percentage is every year, based on what your assessed values are, the number of vehicles, and all that kind of stuff. This year, the rate's 35.1. So last year, the percentage was 37.1. So it kind of goes down a little bit every year. This year, we had a pretty big increase in assessed values of vehicles, as well as the number of vehicles in the jurisdiction. So when you start spreading that same $228,000 over higher value, obviously, the percentage.
Right.
So those with cars over 20, do they get the benefit of the discount up to the 20?
Yes.
Okay. And they just pay the difference from there on?
They pay the full rate on the difference.
But now with the larger volume of inventory that's out there, right? It's a little, we should anticipate an increase. You said there's more, more cars out there?
Right. More cars in higher value, so you're taking that same $228,000...
That we get every year.
...you're getting for 10 years or better, and spreading that over a bigger and bigger value every year, so that discount percentage will decline every year the values go up.
Do I got that?
Yeah. Can you talk about, is there any discount for veterans or seniors?
On real estate, there is, yes. And then there's some 100% relief on personal property for veterans.
Disabled veterans, or is it all veterans? I'm not...
It's disabled and veterans and seniors.
Okay.
Thank you.
We all got that now?
Will you let me know?
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve, we approve the Personal Property Tax Relief Act percentage for 2019.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any other discussions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is the rental of a mobile stage, and apparently we have had some requests from the soundstage. Tell me about it.
Well, I guess first, I want to know that this was referred back to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Recreation Commission unanimously recommended renting of the stage. We have had a request from Midway Productions for rental of the stage, I think about six dates coming up. I know some of those, we would not be able to honor because of conflicts, for example, with the food truck rodeo. So, but basically if it's council's wishes, and I have had council members ask, I put this back on the upcoming agenda for discussion. So it's really council's decision as to whether we move forward with the stage. I know it was left to not be pursued. Again, like I say, I've had council members ask me to add it to this agenda for discussion.
Well, I think we had, we had it during the work session, but let's get it on the table. I'll make a motion that we approve the rental of the mobile stage.
I'd like to add something to it.
What?
The rental agreement.
Is he gonna need to amend his...
Yeah.
Okay. Tell me what you got, Tim.
He is.
I'll remove my motions, and I'll let you lead with it.
Back off a second.
You make the motion. I just want you to put it there to add just the rental to the towns and the counties in the New River Valley.
It's in that contract. It's in the contract, the state will...
Okay, okay, okay.
There's pretty significant insurance policies required, plus damages, plus...
Million-dollar policy.
Yeah, plus damages, and stipulates who the, there's gotta be a stage supervisor, stage line, SL 100 technician, and I think we have one or two, and then this company that is requesting it has what, three or four that are licensed to do, and it's like, you know, I think that they're even asking for the renter to pay the salaries to those people that are, that are providing that service for them.
And it has to be a local company, correct?
It's a Christiansburg.
Yeah, a Christiansburg company.
With stage technicians?
Yes, with that, but it's local.
Yeah, they have to have it, yeah.
You can't be a company located in Kuylaski and lease it.
That's right.
Harry, that's on page three of that form, that says mobile stage is only available for use within the New River Valley, that's for Montgomery's last...
Okay.
I got a question. Are we approving the rental agreement or rental of the mobile stage?
If you have any changes to the agreement, this is the agreement we plan on using, unless you have changes to it.
And I think another thing that was a concern to some people was that we were making sure that it was available to any company in Christiansburg, as long as they had a certified stage line person, and that is, that is in here, too. The mobile will be available to, for rent for any Christiansburg business. This is on page two, with a certified stage line technician. So it's not just for one company, it's any, any company here in Christiansburg. Right now, there's only one company that has the certified person.
Jim, this went through your firm?
Yeah, I think so, Tim. Mark would have, yeah, Mark would have.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the rental of the mobile stage in its agreement?
I second it.
Motion in the second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
So that is 5-1. Thank you. Staff reports, Town Manager?
Passed around the flyer. We have been advertising, basically our Appalachian Regional Commission, planning grant public information session. It's tomorrow night from 6 to 7. Public input, just pass a flyer to each council member. Anybody interested in attending?
Thank you.
Please let me have. We have, our staff, we have a report on the state's.
I, while you're on this, this Midtown Cambrian stuff, I didn't bring it in, but I received a letter from Trinity Community Church, which is a Trinity Baptist church, that they're having a 50-year celebration on September the 22nd, and they've invited council members to attend that service. And one of the things that they would like for us to report on is, you know, particularly Midtown, and that's where their church is located, and the upgrades and things we have in mind for that. So I have not, we have until September the 10th to reply, but I think it would be good that we go there and present.
What's the date of that?
September 22nd.